For a specified term after leaving their position. Loma Linda deserves to see the truth and honesty prevail. In the last three years, I have sacrificed precious time away from my family to protect our hills, our town, and our institutions for overdevelopment. Those accomplishments are a testament to the passion of my conviction. Voters expect this dedication, and I intend to follow their wishes by maintaining a healthy community. Please join me, Dr. Rigsby and Dr. Brower, in changing the direction of the city and preserving Loma Linda. Thank you.
Mr. Christman?
Good evening. I'm Bob Christman. I have been on the City Council for the last 20 years, and I have enjoyed every minute of it. I love the city of Loma Linda. The reason I ran for council 20 years ago was, first of all, I already had six years of experience working on the Citizens Budget Committee. I knew the city issues, I knew the finances, and I felt I had something to contribute. I was not running against anyone, I was running for the City Council. That is what I am doing this time. I am very proud of what the city of Loma Linda has accomplished over the last few years. For instance, I am very proud of the fact that I led the efforts to purchase all of the land that the city has so far purchased in the hills, which is over 1,100 acres. There's been a lot of accusations, false ones I might add, that the city is intent on putting high-density development in the hills. Now, my mother taught me never to call anybody a liar, but for people that have suggested otherwise, instead of calling them liars, I will say they are less than truthful. Another issue that's come up a lot lately has been the relationship between the city and Loma Linda University. First of all, I think we all love Loma Linda University. We want what's best for it. However, I am one of the candidates who has no conflict of interest. I can honestly say that I vote on behalf of the citizens of Loma Linda, and I don't have to abstain from any votes on those issues. I love walking around town, I love seeing the people enjoy the parks, the recreation facilities that the city has put in place. And that is what makes the city of Loma Linda a strong, livable city. I'm also proud of the fact that we have had balanced budgets for the last 15 years. I thank you for your support.
Okay, you've met the candidates, and I think you should also meet the people who are helping to make this forum possible. Our timekeepers are Bruce Powers and Tara Talvin. Our question sorter is Shirley Harland from the League of Women Voters. And the chamber ambassador, I have the name of Ms. Hemphill, but there's a blank person. Who's the second person who's the ambassador? Stephanie? Okay, and Stephanie, would you raise your hand? Back there. Okay. And I am Gloria Anderson, President of the League of Women Voters of San Bernardino. Now, the first question that we are posing to all the candidates, for which they will have one minute to answer each. Number one, what would you say are some of the major accomplishments, starting out on a positive note, of the city within the last 10 years?
And we'll start with Mr. Christman.
Over the last 10 years, one of the major things that we have accomplished has been the purchase of significant amounts of open space in the hills, and the efforts to keep it that way. Over the last 10 years, we have also received the entire funding for two major traffic bottlenecks in the city. One is the Mountain View Bridge, which starts construction this month. That will go from a three-lane bridge to four lanes. The other is the funding that we have received for the Anderson-Tepicano interchange. That is a $52.6 million project. I've been the delegate from the city of Loma Linda to San Bernardino Associated Governments. We have received the funding to entirely fund that project. It is now in design, it should be finished within the next four years. Projects like that take a lot of time, it is now a done deal.
Many things have been accomplished. I, for me personally, obviously, I think the passage of Measure V is by far one of the biggest accomplishments that has taken place. It has shown that citizens do pay attention, and they do want our city protected from overdevelopment. We just need to make sure we have a council that does so. Now, a little bit of response to Mayor Christman's praise for the $52 million, I might add that that intersection needed to be fixed for a number of years. The fact that it has taken him 20 years to get the money, assuming he even got the money himself, the fact many of the funds are still yet to be allocated, and by the time it gets finished, it would have taken 30 years. That is not a track record I would be proud of. If it takes you 30 years to finish an intersection, I think it's time to get another job. Thank you.
I would like to echo what Mr. Christman mentioned with accomplishments. I have been involved with those, and also am very proud of those accomplishments. In addition, along with Mr. Christman and other council members, I'm proud of the money we saved up to establish the senior center, which has been built across from City Hall. A lot of work also has gone into the flood control project that was a big item even when I came on council in '92. A lot of work by a lot of people, very proud of that accomplishment. Our recreational facilities in the last 10 years really have made strides, multiple baseball diamonds, tennis courts, and additional parks that all of us have worked hard. Landscaping and beautification of the city is another project that has really come to fruition in the last 10 years, and I'm really proud of that. Finally, finances, we've worked extremely hard, and as mentioned, I think we're positioned, as well as any city, to handle the economic downturn.
It gets more difficult to find things when you get to the tail end of this kind of a question. Protecting the South Hills was a very large thing, and I think there's still work to be done to help with that, because I think everyone in town can agree that the South Hills has a certain element that's going to be developed in the future, because there are landowners who have rights. And I believe that the South Hills have sections that should be preserved in perpetuity. And all we argue over is the kind of the edges of those two things, so I'm hoping that in the future we can expand on our protection of the South Hills by also accommodating some of the needs of people who want to build in a way that's acceptable to everyone. I think protecting the town from overdevelopment and requiring traffic mitigation to match the development was a major accomplishment. Protecting the north side from the threat of flooding, parks and recreation, I think our cooperation with business has been pretty good over the years, and I'm thankful for that.
I think over the past 10 years, I've seen several parks that have been constructed for citizens to play in and enjoy. That has been something positive, I think, for the city. I think one of the bigger issues that came up was the flood control that provided less money for our citizens to have to pay for the insurance, and so flood control was a major improvement for Loma Linda. And of course, the hills has been a major factor for everyone concerned, and I think so far everything has been done on both sides, we have been able to do that.
Okay, the next question is a two-part question, and I will repeat it if it gets lost. And we've been skirting around this, so I'm sure that all of you will have something to say about it. What does saving the hills, the Loma Linda hills, mean to you? And if elected to City Council, some of you have said what you have done, but what would you do, or what are you going to do to save the hills? And let's start with Mr. Propeski.
We keep going through this debate about saving the hills, and I believe it's one way politicians want to take attention away from the rest of the town. The hills are important. I believe these residents have clearly spoken that they want the hills saved by passing the 1996 initiative and Measure V. They both passed with overwhelming majorities. And not to be negative, but I might add that Mayor Christman opposed both initiatives. And it is, I believe, in the best interest of the community that they have, representations that go along with what the community wants. So I believe saving the hills has been done, and I believe Measure V, the '96 initiative, does enough to save them at this point. We can acquire more land, Measure V does not prevent people from doing that, there can be density transfers, we can purchase more land, many other things can be done to acquire more land, and I believe we can continue to do so.
Mr. Christman?
I'm glad that Mr. Propeski acknowledges that we've done that already, because to hear his rhetoric sometimes, I have wondered, because he did attack us for the last purchase we made of the 237 acres in the hills. I will mention that one of the things I did this last year was set up a conservancy committee to look at what we needed to do to maintain the hills as open space in perpetuity. And amazingly, the people that say they want to save the hills were the ones that attacked me for setting up the committee. They called it a Trojan horse for some reason, and I don't really know why to this day. We wouldn't have that land if we hadn't purchased it in the first place. And I think one of the things in fairness that we have to say is that we can always protect city-owned land. If it's individuals that own land, we need to be responsive also to property rights, and I do want to keep that in mind.
Okay, let's come back here.
To me, saving the hills, much of it has already been accomplished, as you have heard the other two speakers say, but I think one of the most important things is that some of the people that have properties up there already must be given opportunities to do what they would like to do with the hills, but at the same times, the city should make every effort to work with them. It may be exchanging properties or land that is made available to them. And so that, to me, is one of the big issues, and the city has already purchased quite a bit of land up there, and that's already going to be saved.
Okay.
Well, since we're getting, since we're into, is this working? Okay. Since we're into commenting on each other's motivations and whatnot, I think it's great that Mayor Christman has come late to the party, better than not at all, of wanting to save the hills. I think I recall somebody saying that a few years back, he wanted to, he was saying that, why is everybody so concerned they aren't the Grand Tetons? Like I said before, the hills, I think everybody wants to save the hills. I don't think there's very much difference between the parties, and I think there's a lot of room for compromise in the middle. My approach would be to get the parties together and come up with some kind of a solution that everybody can agree with. The current situation is saving the hills, because economically, nobody can develop in some of the trails areas that everyone's so concerned about. If they could have developed them, they would have done it already, so they're kind of safe, but I think there needs to be sensitivity to all parties. There are people who are very concerned about certain trailheads, and there are people who are very concerned about their ability to develop their land, and I think everybody should be helped out in that.
Okay, on the sound here? I guess you just need to speak very closely into the microphone. Apparently, it's working.
Maybe it was the sponge.
Mr. Brower?
As was previously mentioned, I'm very proud of the efforts to save the hills involving the land purchases, involving fostering the initiatives that resulted in the hillsides being saved, and I fully support the citizens' right and the properness of having initiatives such as that. What needs to be done as we move forward to save the hillsides, I think one of the big problems is the lack of dedicated access. We need to work together with landowners, with different individuals, to identify ways to provide access and develop those trails that are currently being used. I also think it's extremely important that as development is proposed, that we work together to figure out what ways we can maximize open space to, again, provide continuity of trails and the maximum amount of open space for future recreation. Those will be my goals.
Okay. I guess I forgot to say, turn off your cellphones. As you can see, there are a lot of questions in the audience, and they have been put into categories of a sort, starting with the more general and going to the specific, I guess. And the questions are addressed to all candidates, but if we have somebody who wants to volunteer to answer the question first, you can just raise your hand. The first one, as I say, is general. What are your personal qualifications and experiences, and what city projects, committees, and commissions have you been on? And what projects have you started that have been accomplished? Does anybody want to start with that? Okay.
I have served on the traffic committee for the last six years. Part of the reason that motivated me to get involved was when I was approached by a group who explained to me what was happening. I helped gather 1,400 signatures on a referendum on the project that the mayor voted on. I then helped get signatures for Measure V. I then helped get Dr. Rigsby re-elected. I then was involved to make sure that Measure V passed, and then I ran, led a campaign to ensure that Measure V was protected, even though it's been constantly attacked by the present City Council. I have some experience in business as being a small business owner. I understand the importance of fiscal discipline and budgets. I work in the healthcare field, so I understand the importance that Loma Linda University plays on our community, and I believe all those things combined qualify me to become a city candidate, city councilman.
Thank you. Mr. Brower?
As an incumbent, again, I think the citizens have the ability to examine any of our records. I'm proud of my overall record. There's been areas that I wished I would have advocated positions or voted differently, but overall, I think the record speaks for itself. Other qualifications, I have lived and worked in Loma Linda for greater than 25 years. I'm very proud to be a physician associated with Loma Linda University, where I work full-time. Even though I may have certain loyalties that go with working for an institution, I am proud of, again, my involvement with that institution. I think that's a central part of this community, and I believe I can handle any potential or perceived conflicts and view that as an or perceived conflicts and view that as an asset and not a detriment.
Mr. Rigsby.
I share Councilman Brower's love for the institutions that founded this town, and also feel that the interests of those institutions rarely conflict with the city, but when they do, in our fiduciary responsibilities, we will side with the city. But that doesn't mean that we are free to answer other people's agendas and launch needless attacks against those institutions. One of my qualifications is that I'm a student of political philosophy and of history. And I feel that I'm pretty good at figuring out how things should be constituted from a general perspective. I come to politics with a philosophical perspective and not with a laundry list of things I intend to do. What I present to you is my judgment. And what I'm most proud of in the two years that I've been here is my role in helping our fire department go from a neglected and dying department to one of great vigor and that is now growing and succeeding and recruiting very high-quality individuals. And it's a fire department we can keep for many years.
Okay. Next.
Needless to say, I'm not politically been involved over the years, but I've been a resident of Loma Linda thirty years. I've seen it grow. I've been instrumental in developing Loma Linda Elementary, in the development of its school, raised the funds, worked very closely with several people in getting that project completed. Been in the community, and I've served on the redevelopment committee of the city back in the early, the late '70s, when they were doing the front on Redlands Boulevard. And then again, recently, in the recent redevelopment projects in the city.
Okay. Mr. Christman.
First of all, my qualifications are that I do have educationally a master's degree in business administration. My full-time day job is I am an associate vice president for Morgan Stanley as a financial advisor. Projects that I've been involved with, and I do want to come back to Mr. Propeski's allegations concerning the Anderson-Iten interchange. A $52 million project has to get funded through priority mechanisms, very specifically the federal government, the state government, the county government. The city of Loma Linda does not have the right or the authority to start working on an interchange. That is something that we have to work through other significant agencies for, and we have to get on the funding and priority lists with those agencies. We don't have that right all by ourselves. Other areas where I'm very proud of my accomplishments are very specifically financial. The city of Loma Linda has had balanced budgets for the last 15 years. Thank you.
Okay. The next question has to do with the people who are here to hear you. How much consideration do you give to, or would you give if you are elected, to what the citizens of Loma Linda need and want? Anybody want to tackle that one? Okay.
That is my primary reason for running. I believe the citizens have clearly spoken as to what they want. I believe that we lack many businesses, though a lot of cities are getting, like San Bernardino and Redlands, and I believe that's in part due to not doing enough to attract them over here. The citizens have stated they want something done about traffic. They've gone tired of seeing house after house being built, but no improvements being made. I think the citizens have gone tired of the houses being built so close together. The citizens are concerned about the hills. So the citizens have clearly spoken in which direction they want the city to run, and they passed Measure V. And I believe just by protecting this measure in itself demonstrates that I'm willing to work for the citizens and follow their wishes. And I would urge other council members like I did in the past to do the same, because our community can prosper if we work together rather than constantly battling each other on who's right and who's wrong.
Okay. Who else wants to take that one?
Well, for me, I will be the only councilman, if elected on this body, that would be able to spend full-time, all of my time, to work for the people in Loma Linda. I think that my... As I have mentioned before in my other statements, I will be available to the citizens, and I will do they will. All they have to do is give me a call.
Okay. Anybody else?
One of my particular interests from the political philosophy perspective is that the citizens have been underrepresented on the council because of the way our elections occur. Our elections occur in times when people aren't very agitated about any particular topic, and we tend to get kind of a monomorphic city council. And when issues come up, the citizens rise up and disagree with the council, and the council says, "Well, you elected us. Our judgment substitutes for yours." Individuals who come to the council, I think by and large, get a fair shake. I think small fry that don't have any large issues with institutions or whatnot, I think they get a very good deal from the council. But when large organizations come before the council, I think there's a little bit more of a tendency to do a little bit of a fishing routine, where there's a lot of reeling in and then letting them run out. And I think that kind of thing is unprofitable, especially when it's done against the founding institutions. And it's done on a regular basis, and it's part of the reason why I'm interested in having a change in the council majority. Thank you.
Mr. Brower.
I have tried and will continue to do my best, if re-elected, to listen to the citizens of Loma Linda. I have chosen not to solicit any campaign contributions from any group, the developers, landowners, citizen groups, whatever. I think I can evaluate and be less likely to be prejudiced by taking any of those contributions. I have fully supported the right of citizens to pass initiatives. Frankly, I think when those initiatives come up, it's a sign of frustration of what city council has done or failed to do. Overall, I'm proud of what the city council's accomplished in the last 16 years I've been on it, but I think some of the hillsides, some of the overly dense development and traffic issues have resulted in those initiatives with frustrations of the citizens feeling that they have not been heard by the elected body.
Mr. Christman.
I have, in my position as mayor for the last two years, had the opportunity to meet a lot of people. I was at the grand opening for Little League two or three weeks ago. I had parent after parent come up to me and say, "We don't understand why people are so upset. We love what's happening in this city." I go up to the dog parks, we have four of them now in our city, and people are out there watching their little dogs run around inside the dog parks, and they say the same thing to me. "We don't understand why the city council has been attacked. We like Loma Linda. We like what you have done." I do believe we have listened to the citizens in this city. Sometimes people come forward and they say, "I represent the citizens." And I have said in cases like that, "The council also represents the citizens. That's why they elected us. This is a representative government, and I do believe we have represented well."
Okay. Here's a big-picture question. What is your vision for Loma Linda? Anybody want to take that one first?
I'll be happy to.
Okay.
First of all, traffic is a major issue. I will acknowledge that. When the Anderson-Tippecanoe interchange is finished, that will bring that traffic level, according to the traffic engineers, to a Level C. So traffic will be solved in the biggest problem area in town. I am also very proud of what we've done for our park systems in the city. We have just recently added a Bryn Mawr park. I want to continue expanding that park. I am very happy with the new president of Loma Linda University. I've known him a long time. I want to continue to build a good relationship with the university. One of the things he has asked for, time and again in his visits with me, is for help on major infrastructure for the institutions. I anticipate that that will be one of the bigger areas that the city will be working on in the next few years.
Okay. Anybody else have a vision for Loma Linda? Mr. Brower.
It's a very broad question, kind of like defining the university and giving two examples, but I will attempt to answer it. My goal is to preserve and keep Loma Linda the unique community that it is. I think many of us were drawn to live here and work here because of the healing work that the institutions provide, not only to our community, to our state, and even worldwide. I'm very proud of that, and my goal is to foster and enable those institutions to thrive. There are many other citizens that have chosen to move here that are not employees or affiliated with the university, but I think they appreciate the small-town atmosphere, the recreational facilities, the opportunities to raise families in an environment that is safe and a unique environment that is appreciated. I will continue to foster those goals as my vision for the future.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Mr. Rigsby.
It's working. It's working. My vision is, as Dan was saying, Loma Linda started out as a pastoral community with lots of agriculture and had a small-town spirit. And I'd like to preserve as much as we can of that small-town feel as we enter the modern age. And I think in order for that to happen, what we need to have is more balance in our representation in city government. I keep coming back to political philosophy. If the majority of the citizens don't have even a seat on the council that they can turn to, they have to turn to other means of achieving redress. And that has resulted in a town that has a lot of stagnation and a lot of gridlock in making progress. And I think if we had a situation where we had one side represented and the other side represented with some moderates in between, we could actually hammer out some compromises instead of all of these standoffs and lawsuits and needs to resort to referenda and petitions. Thank you.
Okay.
One of the most important things to me is to preserve our citrus heritage. We've been a city built and getting rid of all of our orange trees. We need to try to preserve whatever we have left or even add to those things. We need to preserve the hills. I see the hills not being developed totally, but someday, somebody's going to build on the hills. We just need to be smart in how we do that. I think the solutions to parking and traffic is, for me, is something special. I think we need to try to instill some zip lanes quickly so that we can ease traffic and get some of the park, the traffic problem solved, and then find some way to work with the university in solving the overall problems.
And your vision?
Well, I like to see happier residents. I know the mayor says that he goes to the Little League games, and everybody walks to him and praises him about what a great town it is. But I've got to tell you, I've talked to a lot of residents. I've walked a lot of streets, sacrificed a lot of time, and the majority of the residents are not happy. They believe that the houses are building too close together. Traffic improvements are very slow in coming. My vision for Loma Linda is I want, not only to see the residents happy, but I also want to see our institutions thrive and grow. And the mayor wants to take credit for trying to do that, but I recall a few years ago when institutions came to him about the specialty hospital, he told them to Congress, and they can resolve that issue there. When the university came to him for a parking lot, he turned it down. I don't believe that's a record of supporting the university. So my vision is to see the university, which provides jobs and healthcare and education, thrive and grow, because that's what keeps our town healthy. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to shift to an entirely different subject I haven't heard any comment on, but one of the audience members wants to know your views about the smoking control Jump right in.
This one is a hot-burning ember of a potato. I have a special perspective. I'm an internal medicine physician. I served for 15 years on the American Lung Association Board for the local affiliate and for many years on the state board. I've seen firsthand the effects of advocacy at the state level and at the local level. We have board, we had board members who've gone around and put in place smoking ordinances around the inland empire in cities. Though I'm a libertarian, I happen to believe that your rights end where my nose begins. That's an old libertarian principle, and it applies very well to second-hand smoke. And I cannot deny, as a public health advocate, that increased taxes, decreased opportunity, decreased the number of people who take up smoking and continue smoking. And although I do not favor in that ordinance any kind of a private right to legal action against individuals, I do believe that the gesture in the city of Loma Linda, where health is everything, that smoking ordinance would be a helpful thing, and I think that it might help a few people not take up smoking or stop.
Okay. Other views?
This is our issue currently before city council. One of the concerns I have in any new law is whether it's enforceable. There are some elements of the current ordinance that's before us that I have questioned whether it's fully enforceable. As a general rule, I'm in favor of the ordinance before us, and Mr. Floyd Peterson was checking on some of the enforceability issues. And once that is cleared up, as far as I'm concerned, it will come back before the council, and I will support it once the enforceability issues are taken care of.
Mr. Brower.
I do not know what final position I will take on this issue, and I think it will depend on testimony and further evidence. I think all of us up here are very concerned about public health hazards of smoking and second-hand smoke. I was pleased to be able to sponsor our first ordinance shortly after I came on council to ban smoking in all enclosed places. It's amazing when I think back, until the state took action, there was smoking allowed in all enclosed places, and the health hazards were clear to many of us. We became the first city in San Bernardino County to outlaw smoking in indoor places, although some argue Chino Hills beat us at best. It may have been a tie, but we were the pioneers. On this effort, again, I think it will be based on what testimony we have from citizens and what the final information that is brought back to the council on enforceability and other issues.
Okay.
We already have laws restricting smoking in public places. We all know that smoking is bad for our health, and while I believe the council is going to pass this law or this ordinance, this is a law that is unenforceable. And any law that is unenforceable should not be put on the books.
Okay.
Well, I actually agree with Mr. Loja on this. I would very much oppose this ordinance, because I believe, even though I don't smoke and I don't try to get other people to smoke, and it's unhealthy, obviously, I believe that everybody has a right to make a decision as to what type of lifestyle they wanna choose. And I believe that doing so and on sidewalks or on the streets should be allowed. I know that may be in unpopular positions with most people here, but I believe that we have a constitutional right to being able to exercise some of our own habits, and therefore I am opposed to this ordinance.
Okay. Here's another one asking for your views on a local issue. What are your views on protection of the trail system in the Loma Linda Hills?
I'll be happy to start that one. As I indicated earlier, I, first of all, set up a conservancy committee approximately six months ago to try to protect in perpetuity the open space. Part of what I also wanted to accomplish was to trade with other landowners in the hills so that we would have a complete trail system. Right now, most people that hike in the hills do not realize that they go from city property to private property, back to city-owned property. I would like to either purchase or trade with adjoining landowners so that we can have a complete trail system. In my opinion, Measure V has made that somewhat difficult, not impossible, but somewhat difficult, because there are provisions against trading of land values. We have hired a consultant to help us work that out, and we don't have answers yet to that question as to how that will be done.
Let me first clarify that. I don't believe Measure V in any way prevents the city from acquiring more land. What the mayor's not saying is that the people who own the land are not gonna trade it unless some of the restrictions that Measure V places upon other land is given up. So, in other words, they're not willing to donate their land unless they get more houses, the traffic restrictions are removed. So, I don't believe we need to do away with the rules to ensure that we don't overdevelop the city. At the same time, if you look at Measure V, go to our website, savelomalinda.com, there's a section on trails. It supports any effort there is to preserve trails. The mayor has been on council for 20 years, and he has yet to preserve city-owned land as permanent open space. If he was concerned about trails, I think he should have done it by now.
Okay. Next.
My days of hiking is over. But trails are great for those that can and will walk. I think it's wonderful. I support every effort to increase the trails. And one other thing, maybe increase of a larger swimming pool so I can walk further. You know, you only have one lane, so if you can make it longer than I, I can exercise better.
Related to the trail system, certainly the hillsides is probably the largest issue before us, and I agree with all the comments about the importance of developing the trails and to obtain access that is clear and undisputable, public access. I also would like to see us figure out ways, and we'll work to try and ensure that there is better access, at least for some portions of the trail, for those that may not be as vigorous or have some of the infirmities that we all develop as we get older. I also would like to point out, the council has been working, and we still have work to go, on trail system along the flood control project. There are certainly efforts being made to connect that and eventually develop trail networks all the way along the Santa Ana River to eventually Orange County and even the beach, and that is an important priority that I would like to continue working toward.
I won't say much other than to say that the issue with the trails right now is that the trailheads are in private hands, and if you want to get to the trail system, you have to traverse private property, and that is only possible with the permission of those private owners. And I think that securing that trailhead would be a very good goal, so that we can publish a map that says, here you are and here's where you can go. So, I agree with a lot of the people who wanna save the trails and help us help people access them more easily. Thank you.
Okay. There has been a lot of mention of Measure V. One subject we have not covered on Measure V is applying the religious exemption of Measure V to the medical center and university.
What is the question?
The question is how you would apply the religious exemption of Measure V to the medical center and the university.
There's a great deal of misinformation. It is not a religious exemption. It is exemption to the university for the role they play in the community. Mr. Christman's supporters sued claiming that Measure V violated the separation of church and state. They lost. The court disagreed with them. I think that case is over. People would like to say, well, no, the council's gonna say, well, Mr. University, if you promise not to pray in the building, then we'll give you the exemption. That is not how the exemption works. They were given for what they're doing to the community. And I think it does the university a disservice to keep bringing that up in a way that hurts them. This is not a religious exemption. It was given to them for their role of providing healthcare and jobs to the community.
Okay. Any other opinion?
Yes, I'll answer. First of all, it's kinda hard for me to listen to Mr. Popescu at times. He alleges that my supporters sued the city of Loma Linda. They are not my supporters. I have not sued the city of Loma Linda. People that support me don't sue the city of Loma Linda. I'm glad to hear you say, Mr. Popescu, that you don't think it's appropriate to sue the city of Loma Linda, because that is what Save Loma Linda has done, and that has hurt the city a lot. As far as the religious exemption, the city of Loma Linda hired the best real estate attorney we could find to help us defend against that lawsuit. The judge in that case upheld our city attorney's defenses as far as whether that religious exemption was valid or not. The issue as to the religious exemption was dealt with by the judge. There's not too much more we're gonna do on that issue, and I will leave it at that since my time is up. Thank you.
Anybody have anything to add on that? Mr. Brower?
I still think the issue may not be totally transparent. Again, there is no religious exemption. There is nothing constitutionally that would stand up that is favoring one religious institution over another. Our city attorney did at one point opine that he thought there could be an interpretation that would amount to establishing or favoring a religion or religious institution. Recent lawsuits and rulings, as have been mentioned, clearly ruled that it's very defensible, that clause. There is nothing in it that involves religious exemption, and again, involves the common good for a nonprofit valuable asset of the community, and just, again, wanna make that clear.
Okay. Mr. Rigby?
I'd like to sometime ask Mayor Christman how he knows that his supporters are not filing lawsuits, or how he knows who's supporting them. There's an interesting amount of money being spent currently in this town on push polls that are claiming that Mr. Popescu filed three lawsuits against the city. Would that make you more or less likely to vote for him? Well, that's a blatant lie. It didn't even say if he had filed, it just said he did. Would that make you more or less likely? That's a lie, and that's a supporter of Mayor Christman, because they're an opponent of Mr. Popescu. It's kinda hard to make a blanket statement that all of your supporters don't do those things. So, like everybody else said, this is an exemption for religious and educational purposes, and it reveals somewhat the biases of the people who are observing the process when they leave a complete vindication in court and start spinning tales of doom for Luas. It's an indication of anti-Luas bias when they do so. Thank you.
I think it's pretty simple. The courts have already ruled, and it exempts the university. Simple. It's over.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're going to switch to affordable housing. How do you feel the council can solve the question of affordable housing as mandated by the state?
I'll go first this time. There are a lot of Byzantine laws that I'm not even sure, after being on council for 16 years, that I understand all of them, but it is amazing how many regulations the state has and local other entities such as the Southern California Association of Governments that dictate the amount of affordable housing. This community has always had a goal of affordable housing. Look at all the dormitories that we've had for students. By any of our definition, that's affordable housing. The state has put in some specific requirements that they have to be designed in a certain way, so we can't count them. We have worked very hard and are currently working on some projects off of Ann Louvin that we're starting to see some real results that not only have cleaned up Blight, but we'll see many, many affordable housing units put in, and I think all of us have tried to work toward providing affordable senior housing, and we'll make that a goal if re-elected.
Okay.
Affordable housing is very important, given the fact that in the recent years, housing have gotten more and more expensive, and I think everybody has to have an opportunity to move into a house. Many have alleged that Measure V prevents that from happening. Well, once again, the developers sued claiming that claim, and once again, they lost. So, in no way does Measure V prevent affordable housing. I don't believe there's an affordable housing issue in Loma Linda. I believe it's brought up to try to get people riled up against Measure V. I think that we can continue to work and, like Councilman Brower stated, work in certain areas of town to ensure that we can transition some of the areas. I believe that affordable housing must be placed in various parts of town. We shouldn't have put it all in one area. Therefore, that gives a balanced approach to developing our city.
How?
Mr. Rigby?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Affordable housing illustrates another one of the deceptions that's going around town. The general plan that was approved in the fall of 2006 or in the summer of 2006, when I was first elected, that I voted against, that general plan had some, admittedly, our council has admitted, that had some defects in the housing element. And correction of those defects has contributed considerably to the cost of the consultants who have been working on our housing element. There's a draft amendment to the housing element that's up on the website that we've considered. It looks like our inventory is adequate to establish enough that Southern California Associated Governments can give us a passing grade. And as we go forward with for-profit building projects, then affordable housing will be financed, and I don't think that we'll have any difficulty meeting our goals. But what I'd like to stress is that all of these claims that Measure V cost a million dollars, big chunks of that are corrections of defective general plans, and that's where a lot of the money went. And all of it's attributed to Measure V, and it's incorrect.
Okay.
First of all, when you ask, how do you define affordable housing? There is no standard definition for what is affordable. The general plan for the city was studied for over four years, over three different mayors. It was voted in my second council meeting as mayor this time around, on a 4-1 vote, I might add. It was not a divisive issue when it was voted in. It became so after Save Loma Linda did sue the city over the general plan. That is what made it cost over a million dollars. And I am very tired of the fact that we put together a general plan, and somehow I'm solely responsible for that. I did vote for it. I think it was a good general plan. Let me mention something else, and that is Dr. Hart spoke at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast the other morning. He mentioned that when students come to Loma Linda, they no longer take applications for student housing after March, for students that are gonna arrive in September. The university has begged us to provide more affordable housing. The question is, how do you do that and live with all of the restraints that come with it?
Today, there are many homes available at what people may perceive affordable. But what is affordable? And that is the question, I think, needs to be answered tonight, or by those that can tell us what affordable homes are, because most homes are not affordable to those that need the homes. So, my big question that I have is, what do we think, or the city, or the state, or this council, think affordable housing is?
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add?
I'm sorry? I believe I've already spoken on the subject.
Okay.
You wanna get a chance to rebuttal? I would love to rebuttal.
No, I think everybody has spoken on that one. Okay. What would you do to bring, this is shifting to another subject, but it has to do with money, and we've been talking a little bit about money. What would you do to bring money and sales tax money into Loma Linda? And I guess that's assuming that there is a need to bring more in?
Absolutely. May I add, yes, I believe that we can do more to bring more businesses here. I think we need to work closely with Chamber of Commerce. I believe that we can use RDA funds to give tax incentives to businesses. I think we need to do more of that. Just to clarify something that the mayor just said, he just stated that the general plan lawsuit by Save Loma Linda cost the city a million dollars. That is outright false. Perhaps it's a time to correct the record here. We helped collect 1,400 signatures against the project that you approved, Mr. Mayor, and the developer sued removing that off the ballot. You did not defend the people's right to vote. We came in, got our own lawyers on our fighting now in appeals court to ensure that the people get to vote. We then qualified Measure V with signatures. Your friends sued again to try to take it off the ballot because it was in Spanish. Once again, you didn't step in to defend the people's right to vote. We did. Then, after Measure V passed, your friends again sued to remove Measure V. That is what cost a significant part of the lawsuit fees, and it is your record that is causing these fees, not Save Loma Linda, and I would like for that to be clear.
What was the question again?
Let's see. About sales tax money.
That's what I thought it was. I was wondering if I was at the same meeting here.
Just to clarify, it's on bringing more sales tax money into Loma Linda.
We have done a lot in the last few years to develop along Redlands Boulevard specifically. I will tell you that it has been difficult with the economy turning south to get businesses to make current plans to come in along Redlands Boulevard. Very specifically, car dealerships are very important to the city of Loma Linda. We have encouraged them over the years. We have built up a good number of car dealerships. Hometown Buffet has come into town. It's been a few years now. It's been a few years now. We are working with a hotel group to come in along Redlands Boulevard. I love hotels because they provide the occupancy tax dollars. Fresh and Easy Market will be going in at the intersection of Redlands Boulevard and Mountain View. So, Redlands Boulevard is an ideal place for us to have businesses. We are encouraging that. Just because the land is available doesn't mean we can mandate that a business will come in. All we can do is encourage, and we are certainly doing that.
Okay. Other opinions? Mr. Brow.
Not many other opinions, but also would like to just make a few comments about why sales tax is so important. Again, due to Howard Jarvis and initiatives many years ago, there are certain formulas locked into place where every city gets different amounts of property tax dollars back. We're among the lowest percentage amounts for every dollar of property tax. City of Loma Linda only gets 11 cents back. Many other cities get, many fold that. So unquestionably, sales tax is the lifeblood to our city. We've worked with the university to maximize sales tax, and I will continue to foster that. And certainly, development along Redlands Boulevard is key, and I think our efforts have paid off in a number of areas, and I'm also looking forward to the new Tesco facility that I think will be a real asset to the community.
Over the past four weeks, I've spoken to maybe 100 small businesses in town, stopped in every one of those businesses and spoke with the owners. And what I get most of the time is, "We need the city to be more friendly to us." And I ask the question, "What do you mean by more friendly?" And they say they have to jump through too many loops, hoops, to get what, to do what is required. And so, I think one of the most important things for us to do as a city to generate more businesses is to be more friendly. We need to pursue more desirable tax generation, generating commercial businesses that will generate larger tax, uh, sales tax. So, I think those two are the most important things at this point in time, is for us to be more friendly with our businesses so that we can keep them in town.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the emphasis needs to be on bringing businesses to town that we'd like to have, that we'd like to shop at. And the tax revenue is only a secondary concern because, you know, government's large enough as it is. I think it's, I think it's fine, it's great to have balanced budgets and things like that, but if government grows too large, it tends to be more of a choking influence than a freeing influence. So, I would put the emphasis on, let's bring businesses that we'd like to go and shop at, and that would be the driving force. And we haven't had a lot of specific efforts in the last few years at business development, and perhaps we can look at that as an opportunity going forward to be more specific in encouraging businesses to come. We've got businesses that are naturally interested and works, the things are in the works, but it would be helpful to recruit more to our wonderful town. There are opportunities here. We've got a population that has very specific and somewhat concentrated interests that would be attractive to a lot of good businesses that we'd all appreciate having.
Thank you. Shifting gears again, there are several questions on fire department and public safety. One of them is about the recent changes that the fire department has undergone recently and what you see in the future for our fire department and public safety in general, and how important is public safety to you?
I believe public safety is very important. As being an advocate for the committee, I've spent many days in city council observing what was happening, and one of the issues was the fire department was falling apart. And I want to commend Dr. Rixby and Mr. Floyd Peterson for revitalizing the fire department. I believe they are the ones that deserve credit. Mayor Christman earlier said that he was criticized for spending money to spend in the hills. Well, he spent $2 million to buy land in the hills. I was just being told by people on the budget committee that we may have 10% budget cuts, which means salaries will be cut, okay? And apparently, the fire department is one of the areas that they're looking at. I will not be doing that because I believe the fire department is important, but that tells a little bit, tells us a little bit about fiscal discipline. You've got to be smart about how you spend your money, and I believe that in this case, our safety and protection is much more important. So, therefore, I really believe we continue to support the fire department.
During the last year, the city council did an exhaustive study as to whether we wanted to maintain the fire department in-house. We also talked to the city of Redlands, the city of Colton, the county fire department, and even to the California CDF, Department of Forestry. After a lot of analysis, we decided we were better off staying exactly where we are, and I very strongly supported that decision. I'm glad we did it. This last year, we took delivery on two new fire trucks. They weren't additional fire trucks, they were replacements, but we are maintaining that department. We are doing it well. Also, during the last two years, we have added more deputies through the sheriff's contract. So, the city is well protected for both the fire department and the sheriff's department contract.
The decision, yes, was made to, because the other options were somewhat expensive, and the citizens were not in support of outsourcing our fire department. The decision was made to keep it in-house, but that was only the first step in the revitalization of the fire department. The status quo is why we were looking for other options in the first place. The status quo was dying. The fire department was losing firefighters. The morale was broken. The leadership was decimated, and more than the classic definition of decimated, it was almost gone. It was, it was the courageous decisions and the courageous input from the current deputy chief of the fire department that led Floyd and me as the members of the fire department revitalization ad hoc committee to take some very bold moves, to restaff the fire department with a command structure, and to bolster the retirement to make things more comparable to surrounding communities. That's what turned the fire department around. The decision to keep it was actually counter to the wishes of the fire department if the status quo ante were to continue. So, those changes were important, and like I said, the thing I'm most proud of in the last two years is my work with Floyd in making that happen.
Any other opinions?
I would also like to applaud council members Rixby and Peterson. They definitely put a lot of effort in this, and it has come to fruition. Just one little issue that's kind of been a little, I think, misunderstood. I've heard people say that I was out to destroy the fire department, and I asked them, "What do you mean by that?" And they said, "Well, didn't you ask to look at other options?" Well, we, as a council, did decide several years ago that we did have a crisis. We were going to go ahead, and I advocated looking at all the options that were on the table. I think we investigated that clearly. I think we've made the best choice, and that's the decision that I think is best for our department. The only concern I have for long term is some of our consultants felt that long term, i.e. over the next 20 years, the small independent fire departments in small towns like this may not survive, but I think we're in great shape for the foreseeable future.
I think public safety is very important. I applaud the council for what they have done in making our fire department a department that people want to work there and keeping it and retaining it here in the city. One caution, I am a fiscal conservative. I am, my background is in financing. I noticed that the retirement plan came from their reserves. I hope that the planning, that the budget that they're planning coming years, that it will be in the budget rather than taking it out of reserves.
Okay. Anything else? In line with the questions about the fire department, someone is asking for your views on instituting a paramedic service fee or an annual subscription to emergency medical services.
This is a question that probably arose from someone in the fire department because they'd like to actually get some revenue for what we do. The fire department probably could easily be called the paramedic department with a minor in fire. 95, 99% of the runs that they do are medical in nature. And one of my former positions was as the medical director for Loma Linda University Healthcare, and I was responsible for managed care and payment of medical bills and working with insurance companies. And I think it's probably unfair that the ambulance company that arrives five minutes after the fire department gets paid for the run and the fire department does not. So, I would support investigating an opportunity for the department to bill people's insurance for those necessary medical services. We are not just a backup to the ambulances. We are the first ones on the scene a lot of the time.
As a general rule, I have a position on issues. This is an issue that's being studied right now, and I am not willing to state which way I would go on this particular issue. I see a lot of cases where something comes disguised as a fee and it's really a tax, and we just need more studies, we need more reports on this before I'm willing to state a decision.
One of the few times that I actually do agree with the mayor. I think we need to get more.
Put that down as a first.
Well, shall there be many more? I agree. We need to look at it more clearly. I need to know more about what it entails. I agree with Lem that he, and I'm glad of the fact that he is looking into the city finances, we are dipping into reserves. That's a serious issue, so I think that we need to continue to look at possible ways to generate revenue, but at the same time, be conscious of the fact that we do not want to tax our citizens any further. Thank you.
Well, I think there is room for more study. I've spoken to the fire department and people there, and I think they're doing a good job, and maybe we need to take a second look.
The only additional comment I would like to add is, I think, there is no question, as we've seen preliminary budgets for next year, that we will be tackling in final detail very soon. There's no mystery. We're living in some tough times. We're going to have some real challenges next year to balance the budget. I don't think, unfortunately, we can rule this kind of option off the table. We have to look at what the finances present and figure out if there are better ways that we can capture some fees, especially from insurance companies, as has been mentioned.
Okay. The last question is a delicate question that I'm going to try to be diplomatic in asking. I will not name names, but there are a number of questions that do name names, and they have to do with the way council campaigns are being waged or done, and disappointment about the negativity, bitter campaigning, and that kind of thing. So, I guess I'm giving each of you an opportunity to tell us how you view your campaign.
I only have a minute, huh?
Yeah.
Well, in campaigns, people throw allegations back and forth. I would recommend that you read the city news this, next week. Dr. Rixby has a very interesting piece in there about different views on campaigning. I believe that we're running a campaign that reflects the record of the mayor. I believe that the things that we're stating are factual. It truly shows his record on the things, the things that they've done. I am disappointed of the fact that the mayor can say he's going to run a clean campaign, but yet he has supporters who do the dirty work for him. For example, this flyer that was passed, many of you have seen, showing me is a picture of Pinocchio. What is interesting about it, it has his fingerprints all over it because he, they use the same talking points, three lawsuits against the city, million-dollar fees. So, I urge the mayor to ask his supporters to stop this type of campaigning because I'm afraid that it might be effective. Actually, some people may actually believe the lies in there, and I don't think it's fair for the citizens to make decisions based on lies and actually make decisions based on our records, and I think that's what should be looked at.
I'll be happy to answer. First of all, I had absolutely nothing to do with that brochure. I have met Mr. Roberts, the treasurer of that committee. I know who he is. I have zero to do with that. That is not somebody I have anything to do with. I am disappointed in the tenor of this campaign. And just for the record, anybody that supports me, do not criticize the opponents in this race. I am not running against anyone. I am running for the city council. You will not hear me attack anyone else. This is not that kind of a city. This city was founded on Christian principles. I want to keep it a campaign about the issues, not personalities. I did tell my wife the other day, if I was as bad as some of the last brochures that have come out, if I were half that bad, I wouldn't vote for me either. I'm not sure why I am the one responsible for everything that's gone wrong, when I think so much has gone right. I am proud of Loma Linda. I would like to concentrate on what the city is doing right. I think we've done a lot of things right. Personally, I think people are happy in this city, and I'm happy that they are. We've done a lot, and if you want to be my supporter, don't attack anybody. My supporters aren't my supporters if they do that.
Thank you. Next.
When I first entered the race, I was told that there were certain rules to follow, and in getting a small group together of seven people, we decided that we were going to run a clean campaign, and everything we did was going to be honest. That's what we've done. But unfortunately, in the past two weeks, things have really changed that made me take a second look at how campaigns are run in this city. I don't know if that's historical. I've never seen it happen 20 years ago. The last few years, this happened. Got a little brochure here, has my name all over it, but I don't belong to any of these guys here. I've never, ever have any, received any money from any developer. You see my signs all over this town because there are people that I know, or my family know, or I went to school with. And, and these are just regular citizens, and anybody that comes up and writes a story like this, that all you have to do is, is to follow Leo Lohe's trails of his signs and you'll follow Leo Lojas' trails of his signs and you'll find the 900 high-density homes, that's an absolute falsehood. And we're talking about integrity here tonight, and I've, I'm appalled at what I'm hearing. The facts are, I was invited by the Save Loma Linda group to talk with them before it was, before I actually ran, assigned my intention to run. And what happened, at that time, they knew exactly what I was, what I stood for. Yet they fell, yet they went ahead and printed this. To date, I put out 250 signs, 26 as of this date is stolen. So I don't know what, you know, what goes on, but my group, seven of us, small grassroots, getting little money here and there, will be, will fight the fight, and hopefully you, the citizens in Loma Linda, will know that I'm a person that you can deal with. I am honest, and I will work for the people of Loma Linda.
Thank you.
Well, I think everyone up here will join me in denouncing anyone who attacks anybody else's signs. It's just petty, petty goons that are doing that, and you know, if anybody touches anybody else's signs in my name, please stop. I think the rest of us would agree with that. Well, the problem arises when you've got an entrenched majority on the council that has the powers of maintaining those seats. Sometimes their records have to come out, and when negativity is ascribed to those who illustrate or illuminate their records, then people need to take a good, close look at what the records are. Those who create the mud are not necessarily innocent, and those who illuminate it are not necessarily guilty. There's a quote from a 19th-century Christian author that comes to mind, and it's, "The greatest want of the world is the want of men. Men who will not be bought or sold. Men who in their inmost souls are true and honest. Men who do not fear to call sin by its right name. Men whose conscience is as true to duty as the needle to the pole. Men who will stand for the right though the heavens fall." That does not sound like a call to silence to me.
Thank you.
I am concerned about some of the tenor of this campaign, but unfortunately, this is not the first time that's happened in our town. I have prided myself in every campaign as being as independent as I possibly can. I have met with Save Loma Linda once myself. I have laid out my positions. I have told them that I am sympathetic to a lot of the goals of the initiative, but I think there are many things that need to be clarified, and I am not a member of Save Loma Linda or lock, stock, and barrel with all their positions. They have chosen to support me with some of their literature. That's their, their right. I have not written. I have not seen any of that literature that goes out. I think some of the statements are, that I've seen, unfortunately, are somewhat inflammatory. Unfortunately, as Mr. Popescu showed us, he's been the subject of, I think, some rather inflammatory pamphlets. Who puts those out? I'm not certain, but I will pledge to do my best to make every effort to keep from any of that type of campaigning from continuing.
Thank you to all of you for answering all of these questions from the audience. There were a few that we didn't ask because they were probably not appropriate. So I hope that we can end on a positive note, and each of you will give it your best shot to get the votes of the people who are here and who are watching. And we are starting in reverse order with Mr. Christman.
Thank you. I've enjoyed my time on the city council. I believe I have made a contribution over the last 20 years. I am proud of what we've accomplished. We have parks that we are adding to the city. We have the new Bryn Mawr Park. At the Holder Crooks Park, we have added lighted tennis courts. At the Leonard Bailey Park, we now have lighted tennis courts. We have new basketball courts. And we have done all of this with a balanced budget. I am proud of the fact that we are solving the traffic problems. We're not there yet. There's more to do, but it takes time, and it takes help from other government agencies to accomplish that. A lot has been said about the housing issues and density of those houses. I will tell you right now that several years ago, and I will name names, Dr. Don Persley, who was VP for Financing, who is now retired, practically begged us to provide cheaper housing for employees and students. And I believe we have tried to accommodate their requests in that area. I will also mention, just briefly, Mr. Popescu said that I had voted against the parking lot for Loma Linda University. That's not true. I voted in favor of it. It is there now, and I believe he's talking about the one at Benton Street near the VA Hospital. That wouldn't have happened without my vote because I don't have a conflict of interest as it relates to Loma Linda University issues. I would appreciate your support on June 3. I feel I have more to contribute. I am proud of what I've contributed to the city so far, and I would like to continue serving on the city council, and I've appreciated my time in the council for the last 20 years. It's been a wonderful experience, and I do love the citizens of this city. I love the city. I love the feeling that we have in Loma Linda. We are a special city. I like to call Loma Linda the jewel of the inland empire, and I want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to take the time to thank all those who've come to participate. We've worked very hard the last few years and will continue to work hard. We, I'm very proud of the citizens of Loma Linda. They've stood up, and they've come out in droves and voted for Measure V. I want to urge them to do so again. We discussed a lot of issues here, but we have to realize that our future is at stake here, our property values and our quality of life. It's very important for us to ensure that we have a say in what happens to our community, and the best way to do so is to actually come out and vote, and vote for the council member that you believe will best protect your vision for Loma Linda. I want to emphasize that what you see is not really there. It sounds really bizarre, but there's a lot of money at stake here. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars. These people will do anything to ensure that I do not get here because they believe I am the person that somehow will stop them. I think you'll see more attack ads on me. They're going to do everything possible to ensure I don't get an office because they have council members that will go lock and step with what they want. And I don't want to be alarmist, but I'm telling you, this is a long battle. Even if I get in, the battle's not over. These people will not give up. They have given the keys away of the city, and they're not going to give them up that easily. I have been ridiculed. I have had subpoenas sent after me to try to get me to testify just for speaking out. I don't want to discourage people from participating, but I'm telling you, the future of Loma Linda's at stake. There's some important issues taking place here, and it is vital that all of you tell your family and friends to come out and vote. It's an opportunity where your vote does make a difference, and I believe this election will be close. There's going to be supporters on both sides, but it is vital that everybody come out and participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
After listening to tonight's forum and reading some of the campaign material, I would like to paraphrase what Will Rogers said. Quote, "The more you read and observe about this politics thing, you have got to admit that each candidate is worse than the other one." I applaud the efforts that all of us, I think, will attempt to make to keep this campaign positive and stick to the facts. As a candidate, again, we've listed some of the accomplishments that any of us that are incumbents have accomplished. I believe I've worked very successfully with the council on achieving many positive things that we've listed tonight. On the other hand, I have not been afraid to oppose the majority at times when I did not agree. I certainly have had concerns about development in this community. I voted against and argued against approval of all of the projects along Mission Road. The original charter and our plans for that area were that it was to maintain a rural atmosphere. I think what has been approved is way too dense, does not preserve that. So I have successfully worked with the council and achieved, I think, some positive things, but again, not been afraid to object and try and lead in different directions when density and development, I think, is inappropriate. Important land use decisions will be faced by the city over the next four years involving open space, developing vacant land that will forever change Loma Linda. I think I have a grasp of the issues and an independence and an ability to continue working on many issues, and I ask for your vote to allow me to continue to represent you and to work together to keep Loma Linda a unique and special city to live and work in, and I thank my wife and family for putting up for me all these years doing this and look forward to the opportunity to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I can certainly join you in thanking families for putting up with this. My wife doesn't put up with it very well, but she does it well enough. I sacrifice a lot of family time for government. The majority of the citizens of Loma Linda have an historic opportunity in this election to regain majority representation. We've heard a lot of the back and forth, and I think back and forth is essential to balance government. I've predicated my campaign and my service on trying to regain balance. I've tried to take a middle ground. The middle ground has looked like it's on the corner because the majority of the council for many years has been in the opposite direction or in another direction. I believe this is a time when we can grasp this opportunity to allow both factions in town, pro-density and pro-management, to have a seat at the table. If we elect the slate that I'm recommending, you'll have two pro-density candidate, council members, one pro or anti-density candidate, and two moderates. That's a position from which compromise can be ironed out and from which progress can be made. To my friends in the development community, I ask, has this strategy achieved the results that you've wanted? Have you received value for your campaign efforts? I'm not sure. I think there's an awful lot of gridlock in this town, and I think that everybody will have better outcomes if there's a more balanced council. I occasionally disagree with Stan Brower on things, but even when I disagree, I respect his decisions because he's very principled and he stands by his, by his positions. I recommend him highly for reelection. I recommend Ovi Popescu as a representative of the faction in town that's not interested in high-density development. I think they deserve a seat. And if you choose to reelect me or to replace me with one of the other fine candidates, that's fine, but I'd like to see the slate of Rigsby, Brower, and Popescu elected to achieve the basis for progress in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me thank the Loma Linda Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to speak to the residents of Loma Linda. In order for our city to remain vibrant and attractive, we must have growth. However, we must manage our growth wisely while increasing our housing inventory with smart planning. The hills are beautiful, and we must try our best to keep it that way. We must work hard to preserve the remaining citrus heritage and protect the trails in our hills for future generations. We must move forward with caution and ensure that we do what is best for Loma Linda. I would like to see zip lanes installed immediately to ease the traffic problem while discussions continue in finding solutions. I would support positive, ongoing relationships with Luasque and the city. Some of our streets, city signs, parks are suffering from the lack of maintenance, and infrastructure improvements are required. We must find solutions with issues relating to trains and making a sincere effort to establish quiet zones. A complete review of fire and police services must be done in order to provide adequate fire and police protection. I'm a fiscal conservative, therefore, we must be very careful on how we spend our money. We must pursue desirable tax generation, generating commercial businesses. We must show businesses that we care and we want them in our town. A second grocery market is necessary in order to keep the prices reasonable and affordable. Our residents must feel safe and secure. Our seniors must live in a city that cares about them. If elected, I will be able to devote all of my time to do the will of the people. On June 3, I ask for your vote. My door to my office will always be open, and I will be only a telephone call away. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. To all the candidates for being civil and disagreeing agreeably, and I thank the audience for their attention and being restrained, shall we say? But I will give you an opportunity to do something later on. I also want to acknowledge the executive director of the chamber that I didn't introduce before, Dina Weiss. Stan? And I also want to thank again the people who helped, the timekeepers, Tara and Bruce, and the question sorter, Shirley Harland, and Stephanie, and let's see, who else do I have here? I think that's about it. I also wanted to remind you, if you haven't seen them, that there are League of Women Voters pros and cons on the two ballot measures that will be on the June 3 ballot on eminent domain, 98 and 99. This gives both sides, it gives an explanation of eminent domain and how each of these measures does something about eminent domain. So you're free to take those, and let's see if there's anything else that I forgot. I want to give you an opportunity for everyone to give yourselves a hand. And thank you for coming, and have a safe trip home. Do you want these questions?
Yes.
Are these ones asked, or they all together? They're all together. But I tried to stick-